So fun, isn't it? Sarah, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go ahead and, why don't you turn off your camera until you wanna talk and then I'll know. You wanna talk when you turn on your camera, okay? Thank you. So go ahead and do roll call.
Brian Sunday, Ward two.
Thank you, I am Ward one.
Deborah McIsaac, Mayor.
Brendan Grady, Ward two.
I'm Sheriff's, Ward one.
Jan Hughes, Attorney.
All President in Compostor, wherever. Please see us, okay, let's go ahead and do the Fudgeable Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few minutes, we have eight from twelve.
I did not see anything that needed correction.
Make a motion to broken evidence.
I got a first.
I'll say.
Okay. Ryan, Nikki. We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved, claims payable, I think, is in the shockingly pink piece of paper, if I recall correctly. This one. Any questions on that?
Do not.
Make a motion to approve claims.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That is approved, and we're to public time.
Yeah, I got anyone?
Yeah.
Zach Evan, four thirteen, Green Avenue. Just seeing an interview updates on the state of the street, if there's anything important on that or in my mind.
It's common. We'll have discussion in a subsequent meeting on the agenda, but thanks for asking. Anything else? Yes, Deb? Oh, it's you, sorry.
Go on.
Go ahead, Deb.
Good call, support, four sixteen, Lovely. I would like to see things are better with the speeding on Lovely Avenue.
Great.
But I'd be a big fat lion. When we can call, when city hall can call the sheriff's department and ask them to do something out here, and we get told, we don't have anybody available, we really can't do anything, blah, blah, blah. And then a certain citizen, and that'd be me, calls and says, these construction trucks are flying past my house. Before somebody gets killed, you need to get something done out here. And they say, well, we don't have anybody available. And we can't send the school, city, state job, it's gonna be like we'd like to. And I say, you guys need to quit messing around and start ticketing these people. Because this deputy tells me, they've gone up twice and talked to them on the site up there, and they're still not slowing down. That is beyond ridiculous.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm just telling you guys, now what, they're not hauling all the dirt and clay down over here anymore, instead we've got cement trucks flying around, which are even heavier than when they were hauling the big trucks of dirt. And they're flying by all the time. There's just absolutely no way they would be able to stop it, they had to. Somebody's gonna get killed.
Okay, Linda, what steps do we have, or what choices do we have in this kind of a situation?
Um, just, you know, for call the sheriff. And I appreciate Linda doing that, as I requested, but to just be told...
Is that what happened, Linda, they told you they didn't have anybody else available?
They said they were trying to send the, um, school resource on for some, you know, that they were short step. And then, um, he said, whoever I talked to, I didn't catch the name. He said that they were trying to visit on site and talk to them about their speeding. And Deb had said it was one certain company that was doing it, the other was, um, driving, was speeding, and we were told. But evidently, they're not taking those warnings to heart. And whether the general contractor is or they're, doesn't seem to be too worried about taking care of it. And I'd like to know why they're not issuing tickets. Talk to them, and that, let me just see if they hear.
Deb, I wonder if this is something that you, obviously, you're seeing it more often than we are. Um, I, I wonder if this is something that you can document, you know, the truck, the, it's got a truck number inside of it, and call the company themselves, you know? I don't know, if that's something where we need to...
Linda, because I wasn't able to locate the company. And I asked Linda when I called, if maybe the city was aware of that company's location, or how I can get ahold of them, and she didn't have it either. The only person that I talked to that seemed to know who that company was, or where they were, was the officer that returned my call and said they'd been up and already, the school officer had been up and talked to him twice, and
Yeah.
it's not doing anything.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering if you, if you take that information, say, you know, this, if you can find the information for this company, find somebody at the office and say, hey, here's, here's the problem with having, coming from a company that has trucks that we've got complaints for somebody speeding or driving dumb or whatever, which we're dealing with, my situation, when that gets addressed. That carries a lot of weight, when you've got somebody on the, on the physical street, calling the company and...
Well, sit in my driveway and see what we're doing.
And maybe they...
Let it out, come sit in my driveway, I'll make you cook.
So is there identa, is there like an identifier on the truck that you know?
These companies logos are on there.
That were causing a problem, yes.
Well, something to consider, that this construction site is, um, employed by the school. So maybe the school would carry more weight talking to them, as opposed to us, it's, it's their contractors. It's just a thought. To get a hold of them, yes, sir.
You just, it's a state highway, call Highway Patrol.
But that's, that's who we call.
It's county, county highway, yeah, but we have multiple companies, sheriff, to try to come out, and they won't. They won't have this man.
But at the end of the day, these contractors work for the school. And so I, would you feel comfortable taking that as an avenue, and then getting back to your older men, and letting them know the results of that, and then we'll see what kind of action we can take from there?
I, I will do that, but with us transitioning leadership, though, I feel like...
I understand, but it also taking the stand.
So I'm, I'm the head on the hill for the new act.
Well...
I just, I just think we need to think outside the box here, to, obviously, the standard steps of problem solving are getting cut, so...
Yeah, I mean, give me a call tomorrow morning. We'll have a conversation.
Um, no, I'll be at court tomorrow.
Well, when you're available, give me a call.
I'll talk to you later.
Okay, okay.
Word of tomorrow afternoon. I should be out.
Thank you.
Um, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. The other thing I wanted to ask about, is there gonna be any discussion about citywide pickup of those city, rural states?
It's not on our agenda, but we can certainly put it on another meeting, do you have, um, feedback you wanna give?
Yes.
You wanna use it for public time, or do you wanna have it on an agenda item?
I think it'd be great to have this an agenda item, because there's been a lot of conversation out here about the dates and the limitations and, yeah.
Will you add that to our next meeting? That would be great. Anything else?
I may be wrong, that's okay.
Please, you never know. You never know. Okay. Yes, sir.
Stand up. Uh, do you, my name is Senator Tom Pischke, uh, I live in Dallas Rapids, you know, live here, I'm not a Baltic resident, but I heard there were some exciting things happening in Baltic, and so I just wanted to come and attend one of your city council meetings, so here at the day. Uh, I'll plan, I'm gonna call the sheriff tomorrow for you now.
I appreciate that.
I don't, I don't mic your set personally. No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the proper seat, too.
Yeah, well, it's probably, well, it's like, sorry about that, it's a long drive from Dallas.
You must be exhausted. Anyone else for public time?
We had a lot of talk about chickens earlier in the year.
We haven't heard anything from those citizens that said they were gonna put together an ordinance?
We're kinda waiting for somebody to bring it forward.
Okay.
Are you looking to add that up now, or? Okay. Okay, thanks for asking. Anything else? Yes? Alright then, we're gonna go on to old business. Um, we are going to talk about the American Legion, we have Jeff Mott here. Jeff Mott, sorry, Jeff Mott, and he is the commander of our legion, and, um, we've been having some conversations between the city and the legion about bringing, um, together a Veterans Memorial Park. And the concept that we had discussed is utilizing our row of flags as the location of the memorial park, because it's using space we already have. Using the space in between the flags is a great, um, efficient solution um, for the cost constraints that we've had with other proposed designs. And so Jeff, um, took that back to the legion, and now he is here today to talk to us a little bit more about that, so we can see what we're gonna do with it.
And what I got is, first of all, this, this memorial has been altered a long
Yeah.
long before I was even around with the legion. It's been on the shelf for the last three years, because we had people that were thinking way over their heads. We have a bunch, and they need to think within their body. And to say a memorial park would be kind of an exaggeration.
A memorial.
A memorial, a veteran memorial for the public, really, which it so well deserves. What I have, and we have talked about putting it in the row of flags. I put together a board, and, uh, we are going to discuss everything, and we're gonna come up with something good. Now, but it's, it's gonna be small, it's, don't expect a lot. We're gonna take, between the two flags, you're gonna have a stone, a statue. Uh, what I do, I have a couple of pictures, because I know you guys had said, we wanna, we wanna draw. I don't have a drawing. I'm not gonna have a drawing, because I have no idea what we're gonna get, okay? What I do want is I want approval to use the property, okay? What I'm gonna give you here is I got a picture of a stone, which has about a four percent chance of being used. That would fit in between. This is my ninety percent chance, and we're looking at one of those in between each of the flags. Uh, those are stainless steel. They are very well designed. I do have an artist that can make them. I've not got a cost on them yet. So to say that that is in stone, no, it's not. But this is what I would, I'm, I'm preferring to go with, because it's more affordable.
I'm gonna show this to you guys, and we'll pass it around, it's basically a steel, um...
It looks nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's very well designed, it's very well made.
Kind of like a sculpture, almost.
It is a sculpture.
Yeah.
And the gal that I'm gonna talk to about going, has got a couple sculptures on the sculpture walk.
Mm-hmm.
Now, she's a pro-aleter. So we're gonna talk to her about putting it together. Uh, the stone, more likely not, I've got a couple of them, I gotta convince you that that stone is not feasible. That stone that you're looking at right there is about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. That is all enough our budget.
Right, right.
That must be huge.
It, it's, it's a good size, but they're expensive, yeah. They're very expensive. And if anybody bought a headstone for a loved one, they know how expensive they can be.
That's right.
Uh, I wanna get this thing done. I wanna get a lease to start. Now, like I've told you, Deb, before, this is the American Legion. We're all volunteers. Everything moves at a snail's pace, which drives me absolutely insane sometimes, but you have to live with it. You just gotta learn to roll with the flow, because nobody's a firefighter around that place. So this is gonna be in making. What, what I would like to do is get approval by the council to use that land. And what the first thing I'm gonna do is I've got a banner ordered, uh, from Match Month Promotions, and it is a woven red with white lettering saying, "Future Home of the Baltic Veterans Memorial." I'm hoping that will spark some more interest from the public. Because for, right now, we do have enough money to get one or two of these in place, okay? That's been sitting in the bank for quite some time. Let's get it rolling. Give me what I want, and let me get this thing moved.
Do you guys have any questions for him?
I'd like to make a motion.
Um, hang on a sec.
Huh?
Hang on a sec. Are you gonna use quartzite for your base at all?
Um, what, right now, I'm looking at probably no quartzite, I'm looking at just concrete
Okay.
for a base.
The, the reason why I bring that up is, uh, if you contact the Jasper Quartzite Mine, that's in town, they're the ones that put together all the, the, um, signs, and then they kind of go and, and all that. There's, there's pieces that have cracks in them, that they can't use to make memorials out of.
My base has some damage.
Right.
Right.
We had a bunch called into the Levitt in Sioux Falls.
Okay.
And I think, I'm not a hundred percent, I think they donated it.
Or they have, okay, yeah.
That'd be worth a phone call, if you wanna use quartzite.
Yeah, I have a friend that works at Gibson Memorials also, who said that they do get them, but to get, you know, something like that is also far fewer, far between. But I'm gonna get that made from you before we
Yeah.
before I leave, I didn't bring anything right on, because I'm kinda dumb.
Oh, that's fine, I can look in my...
Okay.
We do have a resident here in Baltic who's worked for Gibson for a lifetime.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you.
Same person.
Yeah, yeah, my, he's, he's not from Baltic, but I know he's been there for many, many years, he works in the, in the production part.
Yeah, guys who have, I mean, much too free.
Yes.
The twenty-one flags.
Right.
Is there a significance to that number of flags?
Twenty-one gun salute?
That's it? Okay, I wondered.
Um, yeah.
I hope that's the meaning right there.
It is, for now, I believe.
I'll, I'll do the motion. So I suppose it's just a motion to give them, uh, use of the property, right?
That'd be a legal question.
Jeff, Jeff, is it okay for me to share your information?
Absolutely.
Here, I'm doing it on the phone.
Okay, this is my, my hand. Yeah. You, you, are you interested in a couple thoughts?
Yeah.
An easement could be done, which could be a permanent, would be a permanent thing. There would need to be a defined area, I suppose ingress and egress, and a, a defined area, which wouldn't be a, a big deal. Justin, I think somebody did, you know, seems like pins and um, I'd throw in the legal work.
Okay.
I'd just do it.
I think I'd be wise, yeah. I don't think you're gonna...
Definitely appreciate it.
I got no touchback on, but, and we, like, we've talked about this since I've been here.
Right.
I've been trying to get something going here, so I, I think the consensus was always to make this happen on city land, we can, uh, I have no opposition to doing that, just like John said, getting it done in a legal way.
And my big concern right now, when trying to get the guys to think to our budget. I mean, they all got these big plans, and I, you know, I keep explaining to them, this is not gonna happen overnight, you're gonna see one or two of these pop up. And then it might be a year or two before you'll see something else pop up. Anything that we do, we will come to the city council and get approval before we move on.
Will, will there be a parking lot?
No.
Not yet.
This, this, that's why I say, this is not gonna be a veterans park, it's gonna be a drive-by memorial until things start falling together.
Okay.
This is not, this is gonna be years in the making.
Yeah.
But it's been sitting for seven or eight years, when nothing happened. People in the Baltic area have donated and bought raffle tickets and stuff to go to this memorial, they see nothing.
Yeah.
Each time, they see something.
Agreed.
Okay?
Could you figure out how much ground you need?
Right now, between two flagpoles.
That's it?
That's it.
Hmm.
And so, and, and maybe one other one, depending on what the costs they have to fill.
How many are you thinking in total, when you're, you're all, years down the line, in total?
Years down the line?
Yeah.
I'd like to fill up every hole in between every flag.
Well, if we're gonna do some...
But that will happen when I'm five hundred years old.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we, that we're gonna do it, we do it all.
Um, if, if, if it comes to, the guy who talked about putting a burn pit for flags, so we can actually burn flags the right way, which would probably have to extend back behind the flags a little bit. But that is something we'll talk about when the time comes. We are not, we don't plan on doing anything without your approval first.
And it's a process.
And it, it's gonna, it's gonna take years. But we need, it's gonna be a movement, it's gonna move forward.
Let's get started, yeah.
It's, it's, it's gonna show the people of Baltic that they've invested in the right thing. And there will be more fundraisers, I'm starting a hot raffle. Uh, I started it last week, and that, all that money is gonna go towards this memorial.
Well, the visibility of the banner should generate, we, we think with generating more interest more questions, in fact, it could be a recruiting tool for the legion, which is...
Hoping one of you millionaires that are sitting out there will just say, hey, Jeff, let's, we're gonna build up a voice story, don't we?
We're taking, well, yeah, we don't have an AG ever involved, so...
You have one of the Delta apps, you have to go ask. And you have a really nice performance. Yeah.
So what, what action can we take tonight, John?
One thing you might wanna consider when you're designating your land for your legal purposes, is the time may come, once they get one or two of the sculptures in, or to protect those, they have to coordinate off, so that when we have the big track meets that had people parking between all the flags, all the way down the row, and big buses up in that area, that they have a way of protecting what's being built up there. Because every track meet we had this season, it's been overloaded with vehicles of all sizes.
Thanks, Deb. What do we need to do tonight, so he can get his banner up, and then work out the details later?
Well, you could direct Justin and me to, well, discuss this and figure out a plan, and come back to the council.
I think I'd, uh, leave it as no action, but keep it on old business, we can drop off whatever easement or whatever, document, anything we need, revisit and get a formal vote next month.
And do it.
I mean, you can still hang your flag, I don't think there's any opposition, I don't know if that necessarily needs a...
No, you can get a banner. Okay, we can get a banner up, yes.
Number one.
Something visible. Yeah, yeah. Okay. That'd be fantastic, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And come with me, I'm gonna sneak out and invite somebody.
Thanks, Jeff.
If you wanna have that essence, none.
Or to, oh, for, yeah, I could get that through my buddy, I appreciate it. Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take those drawings back for me. You got copies of them? Leave it to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Alright. Now we're going to ordinance twenty-three, two thousand eleven, RV parking ordinance.
Okay, um, I found this ordinance, Ryan, I thought it was an ordinance on parking. This happened after the two thousand nine, um, resupply to go and anyway, was, was done. It never got codified into that ordinance, but I think at this point, we should wait until the whole ordinance is gone through, because there'll be a lot of changes. So just to keep in mind that we do have this, it's not in rezoning ordinance at this time.
Is it, um, has it been legally approved and everything?
Yeah, everything was published.
Everything? So it's just not, when you go to ordinances, it's not there?
Yeah.
It would be considered, the, don't we have a page that has like updates that haven't been codified yet?
I did see, last time I was out there, there's a...
There's like a thing.
Um, yeah, I forget what it's called, but it's basically, yeah, it's basically the ordinances that have been approved after they were published with that uh, AM legal, I believe it is.
Yeah.
I didn't click on it, so I don't know if it's there, but I know I saw it.
Oh.
I looked at that, well, yeah. You could do that for now.
Ryan, is there something else out there that speaks to expired licenses on recreational vehicle? I'm, I'm asking, because I am aware of someone, not this council, past council ordinance, who was required to get rid of a vehicle because it did not have current plates on it, and had not had current plates on it for like a few years.
I'd have to look up that ordinance.
That would be the same as a vehicle.
Would, yeah. Yeah.
So it'd be considered an abandoned vehicle.
Yeah, that was a serious. This is, uh, what we're talking about here is the Baltic city ordinances. These are the zoning regulations.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and you don't have a page for that, then?
No. Um, I have looked through there, trying to find rezoning ordinances, that's another discussion.
So the zoning regulations, that link?
Yes.
Could you add that page, make a copy of that page, and add it to this page?
Yeah, this would be a good thing to do.
So the ones that aren't codified into the zoning regulations, you could do, you know...
Isn't that under planning of zoning?
Well, this one, um, yeah, and it says zoning regulations, and this is the link.
What are those, okay, ordinance.
So if you find it anywhere, that's where you put them? So at least everybody can find them? As long as they've been approved properly, that's probably where they should go, until we get them all together? Is that right, Linda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think they're all working in, but...
See if there's anything else out. Well, if there is, now we have a place.
Because most of them have gone to the Baltic city ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Cool. Anything else on that one?
Nope.
Okey-dokey. Um, we're gonna go on to the welcome to Baltic sign. Um, oh gosh, when was it, Zach? Um, sometime back, um, Ryan Solberg had applied for the grant, um, for a, a city sign. And so, um, there have been, there's been much discussion, but really haven't landed on a design. And so, um, we're lucky, lucky enough to have both groups working on things, so we have a couple of things to look at. This is the one that B A D F sent.
We did have several quotes on this, this one was by far the liked, and felt it was the best design, the best feature, it was the best price for what we were getting on it. They did, they did give us two options on this.
Yeah.
Uh, and with, and without those changeable letters.
So there's the changeable copy, and then here's one without changeable copy.
We talked far too long about this, but landed on, we thought maybe the city would appreciate not having the changeable letters, because we got feedback that the letters go around, and then over, all of a sudden, kids go by and it says something inappropriate.
Yeah.
What do we advertise, what are we not advertising, so?
They had it on paper.
Yeah, and the, the base of that is, uh, whatever you guys would wanna do, but your price doesn't change, they just said, what talent are you, lose your mask out, and they threw us this. So if you had something else out there, this is also backlit, and Hebrew, is it Hebrew supporters? Hebrew supporters that would donate all of the labor and parts to hook up to electric, and there's a poll, right? Not an electrician, I don't go to the doozpicks, but and that, all, the price all falls in what the grant is.
Yeah, so it falls within the grant. Thank you, sir.
The grant was five, right?
Yeah.
What's the location again?
Um, right in front of the elevators.
So it is on the left side.
That road.
Exactly, yes, utilizing existing posts, or wait for the new posts, too.
They said that they would handle the full installation of it, I think, including the posts.
So there's one. And then we have this one. Mr. McGrady?
The last thing on the other one is there is, uh, on the back of that, they moved something to, though.
Okay, it's double sided?
Yes, double sided.
Yeah.
This doesn't include the post, I don't believe.
Because they're using our posts.
Yeah, right, they're, you know, what shape they're in.
If I'm wrong, I'll still say it, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure they said it would we installed it.
I'm just gonna keep scrolling. Um, so there's a couple of different designs, basically, they utilized, it looks to me like they utilized the shape of the sign that we have.
Yeah.
And so, um, that's some other designs. So, um, some feedback on this one was maybe get rid of the flourish. No, that's deep. And so, and maybe, you know, square it off or round it off, because this just looks like something that's, you know, gonna break sooner rather than later. That's my feedback on this, otherwise I'm...
Well, my opinion on this, if it's on the, on the old sign, was to stop it from happening again when we get another
Because the sign didn't break, the, the things did not break, the frontage, the post didn't break, the postage of the sign
Yeah.
got wiped off in the, the storm.
They came outside the post, were, were good, it was the backing that was shot, so it'd need this new composite backing, if you wanted to reall and then they'd do whatever, you know, cosplay, it's, cosplay wouldn't change based on design.
And lighting on this?
That was no lighting, that was a straight sign.
So we could put a, something in the ground?
There's enough, there's plenty of room. And we're coming in a couple files, and just about shy of existing, you know?
So this, the interesting thing about this is this one comes in under three, so we could take the remaining money and put one on the east side of town, and two, as an option, so you have one and one.
Yeah, you talked about town, we weren't sure where it would go.
Right.
How far, how pretty.
Doesn't, does it, does it still have that one on the east, not in their property, though?
Uh, they have the, the base, but they haven't put a sign in yet, even though...
I know they're talking about, I couldn't...
Well, what's, what's the sign that's out in the field? Is that not a big sign?
Well, I think we need to keep the Baltic world on.
I agree.
That would be this one, everybody.
Yeah, the bottom one that's out too.
Yeah, the bottom, okay.
I think, I mean, if I was to choose that to the bottom one, the welcome Baltic, I think it's a little bit simpler. I don't think you want it too complex. Um, as far as this versus the backlit one, I guess I can't say in the partial theater one, but I don't know if we wanna try and obtain some feedback on that.
We could, we could leave that for Saturday.
You know, that's a great idea.
Uh huh. Make a decision for next month.
I can get copies of the one that you guys put together, but they're, okay, they'll make them available for you.
I put that on the website, so everybody can see it. It's part of the meeting packet now. I just threw it in there.
Isn't there another sign out there with the fold down?
Say, they said we can change the fish as well.
It's just, it's more of the shape of it.
We said, we said on the local neighborhood.
So you kind of got your own hand on this, on this, this sign per se, you can just have it.
Yeah, they said the price wouldn't change. Yes. I'm right about forty-six hundred.
It was a five thousand dollar grant, you said?
Yeah.
Isn't that great? If there's money left, do we have to kick it back then or how's that work?
Back for the, even five grand to build the sign, I think they.
Okay, okay.
Right, we, we as an organization, about if it came down to it, we would probably rather spend fifty-one hundred bucks and kick in the extra hundred ourselves. Than to come up a couple of grand short, but thanks, but no thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, what do you guys think about just, uh, table it and, and leave that for discussion on Saturday with, uh, coffee? Get some, uh, people's input from town.
Are we under a time crunch?
I think so. Pull it down to a year and a half ago.
Well, I know, but I mean, for instance.
I don't think we got an expiration on that, to be honest. I mean, if we came to the, for the six months, I probably wouldn't. They didn't say we're locked in, but I mean, they also didn't.
As much as I'd like to move forward fast and get it back up, I hate that broken sign out there. It's, I think it's important to get input from people from town.
Well, I agree.
And there's very opportunity for that.
And remember, if you wanna put.
I'll make a motion to table it the next month.
Or to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, excuse me. One second.
All those in favor of tableing to the next meeting?
Bye.
Bye.
Okey dokey. Okay, so now we have ordinance three-ten. Ordinance three-ten and ordinance three-eleven are kind of a combined thing. Um, as best that we can put together in the documentation is these were rezoning requests. And, um, the previous administration had followed through all the process of doing the public hearing. You know, um, and then, um, doing the voting and then they did this, the, the P and Z approved the recommendation. Then they did the public hearing for the city council. The city council approved it, but then no ordinance was ever written. So when you go down the processes of the steps of how to do rezoning and the zoning regulations, it goes down through step E and then stops. So at this point in time, we need to do F, which is the actual ordinance to actually. Put that, what the previous administration put into effect and voted into an actual ordinance. So that's what three-ten and three-and-eleven are, is to correct that and get it going. We do believe there's other plots of land that we have to do this for as well. And so we're gonna go back and correct all that. So this is just step one of doing that.
Yeah, there's a couple of typos that need to be addressed. Three-ten. These all did a rezon. That's these all. And then, uh, addition to the city of Baltic, many high climbing sites would be rezoned from what to R three? On ordinance three-ten.
Oh, okay, that was on M R C.
Yep.
And then, uh, ordinance three-eleven is rezoned as well.
I love cloning, right? But this is just the first reading, so.
Right.
Yeah.
On this second one about lot four, I think on the G I S, it's now broken into lot four, eight. Five, six, and seven, so I don't know what that means. If you call it out, is there a lot four that implies those?
I wanna check that too. And like I said, this is first reading.
It was all lot four when all, everything went through to, you have before it was refletted, so.
Because this track one is also now lots seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six. But at that time, it was track one three, so that's when I left it. So I will double check with Steve Paul and see if that's correct.
Okay. Cool. And then, um. The development agreement negotiations, um, because we're in the, where, there was three lawsuits. Two have been dismissed, the third is still in process. Um, then there's also the issue of the development agreement, trying to get that nailed down between the developer and the city. So in that correspondence, there, there. Conversations happening regarding the development agreement. And so the question was broad, and that's why I'm bringing it to council, is do we make those emails back and forth public? Or do we wait till the development agreement is done and then make it public? Discuss among yourselves.
John?
That's the same thing.
What's the norm on some of them?
Well, when you have a municipality. Transparency is generally. Desired by everybody. Plus, when you're talking about a settlement agreement. When reached, it used to be in South Dakota that those documents could be kept out of the public. I probably remember the. Denny Sanford Premier Center, remember that?
Right.
Everybody wanted to know what the deal was and who was paying what, did you lose responsible for what, and all that was kept through the public. And I think generally speaking, uh, our legislature got kind of tired of, of all of that. And passed the statute that those types of settlement agreements now need to be made public now. Question becomes, what do you do when you go? Well, um. My phone isn't ringing. Okay, uh, and I'm not getting emails. Uh, expressing, uh, anything but more than a vague, um, a vague generosity. We've got a motion on our attorney's fees request, requesting eighty-three thousand dollars in attorney's fees from. Grant Park Capital and its lawyers, its former lawyers. That'll be heard on June twenty-sixth. Because the judge said that there was no basis for the lawsuit, which is what our position was. Early on. So. I don't have any update. Uh, Grant Park has new lawyers, but Lee Shonback's going to Italy for about a month.
So the question is, John, because, um, the emails now have whittled down to. Just the development agreement. As we wrap up the third suit, right?
Well.
Now we're down to the development agreement. Is that the time that the citizens get to see the back and forth of that? Or do we just wait till the end and then?
Your call.
Sarah's taking her head, no.
Well, I think I'd wait till.
Sarah, can you talk, just, are you wanting to say something or?
I don't. Generally speaking, when, when negotiations are made public. Um, there, you know, a whole lot of good that usually comes out of that. But on the other hand, there, uh, you know, the council, um. Voted to create a working committee to draft the development agreement, which we did last November. And delivered it on the sixteenth of November. And then we had lawsuits that were filed instead of response, so. I, you know, if you wanna ask who's on first, in my opinion, uh, it certainly isn't the city. Uh, the D A N R now has filed notices of violation. Uh, they have indicated all of the concerns that were made. Starting a year ago in April of twenty-twenty-two. That adjacent landowner's property is being injured, damaged. And, uh, it, it took the D A N R a year, but they did file notices of violation on the twenty-fourth of April. There's.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Was it the twenty-first? There's very serious, uh, enforcement violation penalties. It's ten thousand a day per violation. So. I, I could, I can tell you that Grant Park does not want the city to be involved in. The subject matter of. The polluting of the waters of the state, even, even though Murphy's Pond is owned by the city, and it is a water state, so. And the notice of the violation state that they are being taught, or. Violations of the state statutes that prohibit polluting waters of the state, so. If anybody wants to know what the statutes and regulations are that are being violated, you, you can read the. They're huge, well, you know, voluminous documents, but I will do whatever the council wanted me to do. I know that in open, in an open meeting last month, you said to me, John, resend the development agreement.
Correct.
Uh, to the new lawyers. Which I did, um, along with Justin's memo dating back to, uh, November. Of twenty-twenty-two, so I guess I, I don't know what to do at this point.
Sarah wanted to make a comment. I like that, Sarah.
Hi, I'll introduce myself a little more thoroughly later, but just suffice it to say, I'm Sarah Frankenstein. I do a great deal of litigation. Uh, on behalf of cities, counties, and in every area of government, I also practice in the area of open. Records requests and when those go to litigation, so I do this all the time. I can tell you, you don't have to. Supply any emails between any city officials, certainly not your city attorney, unless you so choose. I never recommend, uh, putting legal negotiations out for public consumption. Those. Uh, are most effective when they are kept confidential. You don't have to put anything voluntarily out to the world ever. Only you. On within ten days when somebody makes an open records request. And then you just need to respond either with a yes, I'll supply it if you pay a reasonable. Or no, there's a, a, a statute subsection that allows us to withhold it from the public. There is a statute subsection that allows you to withhold notes and emails of this kind. So you do not need to put it out voluntarily. You don't even need to put out, uh, the request. Quest, although I'd wanna look at, any, any lawyer would wanna look.
Sarah, may I comment?
Please.
The difficulty, of course, is that this administration and specifically the mayor has been accused of a lack of transparency. And so I'm not advocating that we release all the emails. But on the other hand, the public doesn't understand. Or have any opportunity to evaluate emails, for example, that the Guzman Law Firm. Want to be treated as privileged and confidential. When we ask for that same treatment, they refuse. And so it's, uh, you know, I, I'm a big transparency guy. I just believe that people, by and large, when they know the facts and they understand what's going on. That they're able to participate and make good decisions. But on the other hand, I, I don't, I, I can see that, I don't know how things could be much more escalated than they are. I guess I would say that. Uh, they're, they're about at a ten, uh, point five. Uh, on a scale of one to ten, and they, uh, are in a position of no leverage from what I can see. Their lawsuits have been thrown out and declared to be frivolous, and the court, the court agreed with that. And so, but the difficulty is the public mind is being played with, uh, to a huge degree in this community. And so, maybe you and I can talk about this and, and ask the specific emails. Uh, but I, I agree with you generally that it's not a good idea to negotiate in public. But I can tell you that there isn't any negotiating. So that's, I, I can state that, there is no negotiating going on. The, the, the negotiations that they've asked for are, are just a regurgitation of the same things that they asked for. Last November and then didn't produce and then filed lawsuits. So we've been living this now for, you know, what, about eight months, I suppose.
So the intent wouldn't necessarily to be, you know, every. Uh, you know, every single email of every single thing, but more so the content that is credible to the. The fact process, you know, and I don't know how you decide. You know, obviously, does three-thirty work? No, I need four. How about Tuesday, Thursday, you know, those back and forth emails scheduling? Those don't, those aren't pertinent, that doesn't make sense, but when there's. Some weighted conversation happening between parties. That we feel the public would benefit by understanding what their city leadership is. Dealing with. You know, that was kind of the point of the discussion is to figure out what, what is okay to share, what's not okay to share. And does that look like? And if it warrants more conversation, I welcome that. Because, you know, we obviously wanna err on the side of, um. Caution and conservatism, but at the same time, you know, we are a municipality and we do work for the citizens and. We work for them, so we're just trying to figure out what that line is.
And Sarah, there's never been a single sit-down meeting to negotiate, not one. There's nothing.
I un, I understand your sentiment. I just wanted you to know what your legal rights were, and I know John already knows this, but you're not required to put any of that out. There's many good reasons why you wouldn't, so just take that into consideration. I can see why you'd want the public to be aware of certain things. But just know you're not required to, don't, don't feel pressured. The law supports city's ability to negotiate in the way that it, uh, deems best. And you can send letters, make phone calls, take notes. All of that is not subject to public scrutiny. You'd never have anybody running for office if it was, and that's one of the reasons the laws on the books like that. That's all I had to add.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So do we wanna think about this some more, guys? Cause what it sounds like is the council can decide if they wanna release. It, it's under the discretion of the council to release, right?
Yeah, I don't know. This doesn't really seem like the greatest idea to me to release it mid, mid-conversation, I guess I would call it. Well, I mean, I still have, you know, conversations about it with, with residents as, as it allows and as time comes up and. To keep them updated, but as far as just releasing all the emails, not that I'm trying to. You know, I, I, I think it's beneficial information. I don't know that now.
To be more specific, just so you understand, we, I wasn't. That the conversation wasn't go back to all three lawsuits and put all that out there. What I was talking about is we're now. At the place where we're specifically discussing the development agreement.
Right.
And how do we get to settlement on that and what are the terms of discussion?
Right.
And so, um. There, there are, there's reasons that. It would, it may make sense for the public to see those steps. Whereas, you know, I just needed to understand that, you know, is that a decision that, you know, who makes that decision? Does it have to be like, like Sarah said, it doesn't have to be everyone, it can just be the ones that we deem pertinent.
Right.
And then it's the council decides what that is.
But that can come back and bite you too. Still don't know that. By not releasing everything because there's gonna be someone that says, you didn't release everything.
Well, I understand that. That's why I wanted to have the conversation.
But since we're still trying to get them to the table. Wouldn't this release drive them farther away from that ta, said table?
Well, it also clears up a lot of narratives when there's misinformation going around the city about what's actually on the table.
Isn't the development agreement on the packet?
We, we released it. We ended up last, last meeting. And people took it, I think it's on the website. Really need to do anymore.
Did we repost that last meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you can, the press, the people over here were giving it to me.
Well, as you guys recall, the last communication that we had had terms to it. And so I, I guess basically I wanted to know if those terms to a potential meeting was something that we could release to the public. And so maybe that's something that should be discussed in executive session. And then if we decide to release it, we release it, and if we decide not to release it, then we don't. Cause that, that's the answer I needed. We're not obligated to release all messages and whatever messages we do wanna release, council will vet that. That's what I needed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Personally, I just like a statement from our council that when there is progress, you. when there is progress, you will let us know and keep us informed. And I think you've done a very good job of telling us that all along the way, but right now, there is no progress.
Well, we're trying.
Grant Park wants to dismiss the third lawsuit. And uh, have agreed to do so and leave the question of attorney's fees open to a court to decide. So they've, they've committed to that position.
We're just waiting on paper.
Attorney's fees in, in litigation for a municipality are like an involuntary tax on the citizens. So that's why a municipal government unit is really different than a for-profit or a private company, which is pursuing profit as its natural orientation. The city of Baltic is not supposed to make a profit. It's services for people. And so the cost of those services go up when the city has to defend lawsuits that deal with the city's inherent functions to determine planning and zoning and public safety. That, I don't mean to give a speech here, but everybody needs to understand the special goal municipalities, especially municipalities play uh, in terms of, of development. It's huge. And so when that process is not due by a developer and instead litigation is resorted to, in order to leverage an outcome that is deemed to be more profitable and beneficial, this is where we end up. And that's where we are.
Thanks, John.
It's just reality.
Okay, so we got that question answered. So on to the community guide. Last May, we came out with a community guide. It was a very um, timeless, generic piece that we had created. And so we still have, how many of those left? Many, many, many. And so even though the original intent was to do a community guide this May, um, I would like to make the recommendation that we use the ones we have. And then work maybe towards next year, depending on where we're at with it. It, it seems wasteful to throw those away with for a new one when all of the things were pretty much a generic, hey, this is Baltic kind of a thing. And there was really no dates. It was all pretty much informational kind of stuff. So that's my recommendation. I just want to make sure you guys are in support of that. I don't think we have to vote on that. I just, it's more informational. Okay, cool. So now we're on to new business and ratify the retention of the attorney Sarah Frankenstein, as you have already met her. And so, John, how do we handle this part?
Well, I think you, uh, you step aside and Travis sits in your chair.
Sorry, I don't have a gavel.
Um, do you want me to introduce you, Sarah? I'd be happy to. Um, I've known Sarah professionally for a number of years.
Get her back on?
She there?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm here.
We, we also have some similar nonprofit interests and uh, Sarah is uh, an exceptionally talented lawyer, and her expertise has been recognized by our state government, by our legislators. She was special counsel for the impeachment of the attorney general. Uh, she's an expert on election law and is an active litigator. Uh, and a really nice person on top of all of those other things. And so when the when the recall election process was initiated, uh, I consulted with Sarah because she is appointed by the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance as a kind of a special election counsel. And uh, we want to be very careful to dot the i's and cross the t's, so. And also with some of the statements, I guess, that were floating around, it made total sense to me to step back and let a truly independent, objective, um, even though I feel independent and objective, people can disagree, I guess, if they want, but I only care for what's best for the city. Um, so I reached out to Sarah and I said, Sarah, could you provide some preliminary uh, advice to me so that I can draw boundaries as to what Mayor McIsaac can and can't do uh, and should or shouldn't do to keep this uh, process of this recall petition as squeaky clean, dot the i's and cross the t's as possible. So she was very gracious to do that and inconvenienced herself considerably to help out. And then it made total sense for me, counsel, to reach out to Sarah and say, Sarah, would you serve as special counsel to advise and consult with you? Um, because the mayor is obviously subject to a recall election, and so her uh, even though she's a non-voting member, uh, we just want to make sure that we are not only proper, but even the appearance of impropriety is avoided. So Sarah's provided a memo which the South Dakota Transparent Government will especially want to read because it details exactly how a recall process every mayor actually looks. Uh, there's a lot of disinformation and misinformation floating around in the last several weeks. And so Sarah drafted this and has released it to the public. Uh, and it tells you exactly how to work this process. So uh, one of the things that needs to happen is the council, council, you need to vote to ratify Sarah's retention. And uh, some of her fees will be paid for by the alliance, some won't. Uh, and so we cannot, but the, the city needs this advice, absolutely needs this advice. So I've probably talked enough. So I'll step back, Sarah, and let you and Travis take over the meeting.
Well, I don't want to forget to have a vote on retaining me. I don't know if you've done that previously or you're seeking that specifically with regard to the recall, but maybe I'll let you do that so I don't launch in and we forget to have that vote.
Yep, that's our first step in this portion. So um, yeah, to, to ratify the retention of attorney Sarah Frankenstein. Obviously, I think it's a smart idea of an expert um, dabbling in this um, particular junction, so.
Make a motion to retain Sarah Frankenstein's services.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Done what?
Well, you shouldn't because you're in the shoes of the mayor.
So, yeah. Okay, so attorney and, or Sarah Frankenstein has been ratified, the retention has been done. Um, Travis, you need to reference this too. So with the presentation of the recall petition, um, Mayor McIsaac have also submitted a filed motion for declaration. Um, filed from unopposed motion in order to enjoin status setting in the recall election of the court rules legal sufficiency to the recall petition. The way I understand that, and Sarah, you can chime in whenever as well. Um, it's, it's Deb's right to basically do this. It's one of the steps um, that she has available to her, um, to essentially challenge the way I read it, um, on the South Florida website, the grounds in which the recall was made, if I understand that correctly. Um, this was submitted that this afternoon. It's very new information to all of us. It's a long process. Um, should that be, should this be the time we use executive session to converse with Sarah?
Let me explain just a couple of things, and then I'll invite somebody to move us into executive session, if that's okay. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so as uh, John and Travis indicated, I do have this memo. It's for the public. It's on the website. It should be in your public packet. You can certainly look through it. I can ask, I, I can speak more to it and answer your questions about it later, but the number one thing you need to know about it is it's no longer relevant. So as Travis indicated earlier today, we did have a court order enjoining the city from moving forward with the recall election. I'm going to explain that in detail to the public, and I'll take your questions on it. But first, I would like the opportunity to explain that to the city council. Because this is litigation as of today, uh, we can discuss it in private with attorney-client privilege between I and the city officials. I do believe that Mayor uh, Deb McIsaac should be excluded from that executive session. She brought the case so it would be proper to deem she has a conflict of interest to take part in that attorney-client privilege discussion that I would like to have with the other city officials. I would ask that the city council people, Linda, the finance officer, John, the city attorney, of course, um, but Deb and the public, uh, be made at this time pursuant to a motion session, and you should cite S D C L one twenty-five two sub three. That allows you to speak with legal counsel with regard to pending litigation.
Yep, so you can make a motion to go into executive session citing legal counsel. We need the number that she's, she stated, we can add that to the minutes, Travis.
Okay. Make a motion to move a new exec council session. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're in executive session as of eight eighteen. We'll step out.
Does anyone have set the other?
Uh, I do. Okay, yeah, if John's got it, we'll.
So you can spot right where.
Yep.
Yeah.
Run that spaceship.
Sarah, you're going to want to take some camera, because my meeting is still going to run. So you're going to want to mute and take your camera off. Okay, so you will need mine? They're going to call it.
They're going, oh, you got, you got them.
Look at the councilman. I'll be Travis saying. We stay this off for the rest of time. All right, so for those of you at home, I'm just going to go ahead and put this on mute, but keep the camera on, and then we'll come off mute when it's time.